Let's call the meeting to order. It is seven thirty on Tuesday, September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. The regular city council meeting of the city of West Liberty. I'm Mayor Ethan Anderson. We have with us tonight, city council member and mayor pro temp, Karen McFerrin, and city council members Dana Dominguez, Ashley Smith, and Josh Schultz. Also with us tonight is city manager Lee Gertz, city clerk Sherry Hofer, and our chief of police, Eric Burman. I apologize, guys. I I lapsed for a little while and wasn't announcing you guys. I know I know that it's our pattern to to always announce the appointed officials of the city at these meetings. And I I I collapsed from doing that for a while and I and I caught it, so I'm trying to get back on track. Um, I'll ask for an approval of the agenda.
Motion, you do it, and I'll second it. Motion to approve agenda, second.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda before you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries four to zero. We'll ask for the approval of the consent agenda, including meeting minutes of our September fifth meeting and the sewer report for August. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve. Is there any discussion? And then all those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. The motion carries four to zero. We'll move on to reports. You have here in front of you all of these reports. I'll say again, as I often do, these written reports are really helpful, even if we don't have questions. It's really great to keep informed. So, okay, council member Martinez has joined us. Council, you have any questions about these, uh, reports?
I would make mention of Ally's, um, calendar that this week and next week. They have an interesting program at the library called How to Talk to Kids Workshop. They offer it in Spanish, Tuesday nights and English. Tuesday nights. I thought that was very appropriate.
We have one of, how to talk to their parents.
Maybe that's next.
Find me a, find my kiddo.
If there are no questions on the city staff reports, I will ask city engineer Leo Foley if he can dive into your report.
Okay, I've got a number of things on a meeting tonight, the Will project, um, Nine Circle, and wastewater treatment. So I'll talk about those when we get there. But the one that's not on here is Rainbow Maxim improvements. And just to give you a quick update, um, the power pole, I guess people that are relocating the power pole are on site. Um, I just got done talking with All American, and they're gonna coordinate tomorrow, and I think they'll be able to get what they need. I knew the two contractors would have to talk, and it sounds like Leo, a couple of calls today, and I think tomorrow, those two will be meeting on site. As always, a little bug's worked out, and we'll get the power pole relocated, and then the trail can go. So things are moving along the way we'd hoped.
Awesome. I, uh, I've started playing tennis in the mornings a few days a week, and driving down that road, like when they're working on it, oh, it's a just a bustle of activity. They've got so many guys up there and a lot of things happening. So it's really fun to see. I think I can take a video of it one day when all the people are working.
We did, uh, just so you know, we did drone it early on, and then we'll drone it again when it's done, because before and after are kind of cool.
That's awesome. Are you, are you, can you share that with? Um, city manager Gertz, we have your report here before you. I don't think we need you to go through it, but is there anything you want to add on any of these reports at all?
It's only a few pages, I'm sure.
It is, it is, it is detailed with that, which is, which is good.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I'm listening on the very.
Okay.
The only thing I have to add is I will be out with the Ivy League of Cities, um, and I do get, uh, Mayor Pro Temp signed up as well, so.
Oh, great.
This weekend, this week.
Weekend?
During the weekend.
During the weekend.
No. Tomorrow, Monday, Thursday. You want to own?
It's fun. I mean, I I went years ago.
Because usually they have a whole weekends, but I guess.
Being he's always getting around with that really good stuff.
What's that?
I said, being he always has good stuff.
Better stop. You better stop with that. Otherwise Doug will be knocking on your door.
I'll send it to Sherry.
He likes to get a update on how I'm doing.
He does, yeah.
Tell him I'm going to rock. That'll be good. That'll be good for me.
I'm gonna say that next time. You told me to.
Yeah. Any committee meeting?
I did have a question.
Go ahead.
Under the Will number two project, the number of doors were ordered outside of the contract by superintendent. We will need to resolve with contract. Okay, and that's the current ones that are on right now?
Yep, and Leo, I think we're addressing that tonight.
It'll be our change order.
I just wanted to communicate in that report that that was nothing on Leo or the contractor.
Okay.
But they were able to resolve it, and so that'll go through the change order we do tonight.
Okay, great. Okay, and then under the financial management, the debt service, debt service fund discussion, is that, um, a a possibility solely for parking rent?
Um, so we contacted, um, our financial advisor Nate Summers and then and John Thanos. Uh, we wanted to go through our our debt service, our debt levies, and, um, as you remember, we have the balance and the debt fund, and we want to look at what was our options by bringing that down. And so, um, we went through, um, that conversation, and the recommendation is is we'll continue to use that debt to pay off, uh, general obligation notes. And then they're, um, giving the new HF seven eighteen legislation that we would want to look at, probably levy over those projects, and combine them into one project for parks and, and if there's some additional street things that we want to look at, because, um, it's gonna be in our best interest, because we won't have any other option in levying over the eight ten that we would like to use that levy for that. And everything that Sherry said in the, that was pretty much all of these, so.
Okay. This report looks really good, Lee. It's really easy to to follow and figure it out.
Did we approve a feasibility study for the pool a while ago? Is there any progress on that? Is there anything we should be caring about?
Um, Nick, I thought he had something in his. He didn't, no, he didn't turn a report in, but yes, they, he said that he would communicate that on his next report. But yes, they are, they are coming down to try to look at it. Yeah, so.
Okay, any committee meeting reports?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, we had an employee policy, uh, committee, made up of myself and council member Schultz. And, um, I think it was pretty successful. Um, we discussed the ongoing efforts to improve employee handbook, and we touched upon, um, the, what we're going to be doing is, um, evaluations. So we worked on a draft for the new evaluations to update that. Because I know early on, uh, councilwoman Smith and I were discussing how the the current evaluation is, needs to be updated and
Yeah.
better approved. So we're we're doing that. We're gonna implement that. But I know that we've got an evaluation coming that we have to complete, so. But because we don't have the new policy in place at this time, we're gonna have to follow with the the current one before we update it. Yeah, well, very, very, a lot of information, a lot of good direction.
Good, yeah. Thank you for working on that. And thanks for the report. Okay, we'll move on. If there isn't anything else to beer and liquor licenses, we have a class C retail alcohol license for Country Mix Incorporated. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Seconded to approve this license. Any discussion? Uh, chief, is there anything we need to know, or any, has there been any issues with this establishment?
I'm gonna give the same feedback for both that are on the agenda tonight. Um, as we talked about last council meeting, um, it's kind of dropped in our laps that county's no longer doing the compliance checks, so we're working on creating a procedure for that. I've already checked with the county attorney to get some feedback about some of the ideas that I've had. Um, so with that being the case, there have been no compliance checks in the last year, but when we looked through our calls for service, there were no calls that needed to be engaged about it.
Excellent. Thank you. Any further discussion? Excuse me, we have a motion and a second to approve this liquor license or alcohol license for Country Mix Incorporated. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. The motion carries four to zero. We follow that with five to zero. Thank you. We follow that with a license for the New York Dollar Store, class B retail alcohol licenses. There a motion to approve?
Motion, second.
Moved and seconded to approve this license. Is there any discussion? Thank you again for your report, chief. Hearing no discussion, um, all those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries five to zero. We have our vendor voucher claims list in the amount of seven hundred eighty-eight thousand eight hundred fourteen dollars and seventy-four cents. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, second.
Moved and seconded to approve the vendor voucher claims list. Any discussion?
Um, I did have a quick question on line item eighty-four, eighty-five, I think it is. I'm just curious of why there was a disparity in the price, um, between Kimberly and Dutton, is of the from at PS three enterprises. Is it just a different?
Like, it's per PS three enterprises, the contract with them, because most of ours are the eighty-two sixty-five, but Kimberly is the two twenty-six twenty.
Yeah, and Dutton is three ninety-four.
At Kimberly, they have, um, I believe they have a handicap and a regular one.
Okay.
So it's kind of. And there's more, there is more, so there three, two or three out there. So it's all built together by the park itself.
Okay, gotcha. Okay.
One of these days, I'm in a restroom in the parks. Any further questions? Here none. We have a motion and a second to approve the vendor voucher claims list. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. The motion carries five to zero. We have public comments and or correspondence. If there is anyone here in the room with, uh, comments that they'd like to share, uh, we always allow two minutes. Anybody if they want to share can state your name and your address.
Mr. Brooks. Good evening, Ken Brooks. We lead one nineteen, these third street. A couple of things I I wanted to to highlight here in this public venue. First of all, I wanted to thank everybody that made this weekend's Children's Festival and Fiesta Latina possible, specifically, uh, Yulun's People Puppet, um, and the, um, uh, Latinos, Unidos group. They did a remarkable job. Both these events happened the same day. There's a perfect snapshot of what West Liberty looks like. So for everybody that made those events possible, um, thank you very much. You you ever made West Liberty look good. Would also like to highlight the Muscatine County housing study that is underway. Uh, we lead urges the community to participate. That if you live in Muscatine County, uh, the county and then the cities of Muscatine, West Liberty, and Wilton, um, are all teaming up, uh, through this, uh, grant funded uh, study that has been conducted. We want to give us some hard data on what kind of homes and other amenities our communities need to thrive. So that survey is open until the end of the month. You only have till the end of this month to complete that. Takes less than ten minutes to do. You can do it online, and you can find that on We Lead's Facebook page, um, and just about everywhere else, too. That's the easiest place to find it. The other thing I wanted to share is that this Sunday, September twenty-fourth, at two o'clock, at Saint Joseph's Catholic Church, uh, We Lead and, uh, Lulac and Saint Joseph's are sponsoring an anti-fraud seminar, um, targeting our Spanish-speaking residents, not just here in West Liberty, but we're expecting several hundred people from the region to be attending this. Um, as you know, financial crimes are getting more and more aggressive, and our Spanish-speaking citizens are more at risk than English-speaking citizens, not only to be taken advantage of by fraud, but also they're less likely to report and follow up on it. So it's at Saint Joseph's Church at two o'clock following Mass on Sunday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
If I could piggyback onto that, I I think there was a considerable amount of people that attended Saturday's events, and I wouldn't be surprised if it was a couple thousand easily. And a lot of people from out of town, especially for the Fiesta Latina, because one of the groups that we inherited to perform is actually, was actually nominated for Grammy.
What a fantastic event for the community.
So we had, we had, because of that, we had people from outside the community come here to see them.
Really awesome.
Yep.
Well, huge thanks to everybody who's worked on that and, uh, made it what it is. Yeah, it's really cool.
And in addition, I just wanted to thank our streets department for the quick cleanup and, um, the follow-up after the events. Um, I know that had been brought to our attention before by a local business downtown, so we did post. Um, so Brittany provided a posting to all the businesses in the downtown to make them aware of the event, and then, um, our staff prepped and then also cleaned up after the event, so hopefully that was helpful to appease the downtown businesses with our events.
That's great. Wonderful.
Mayor.
Thank you, yes.
Tom Christensen, six oh one East Forest Street, talking about festivals and whatnot. Uh, the paragons over the weekend put down the old stage out in front of the grandstand and moved the crow's nest out of the way for the time being, because we're building a bigger and better stage, so we can get bigger and better entertainment down there. So pretty neat to go look at, uh, now, because it's just a big wide open space, but, uh, it's gonna be quite an undertaking, but it'll be well worth it.
That's in the middle of the.
Yeah, out where the band plays on the stage, y'all.
In the truck, in the middle of the track. So it'll be a permanent fixture, a permanent.
Yeah, yeah, which it was before, but it was sagging a little bit. It was built back in the eighties.
Was that cement or?
It was cement. It was cement, um, slab, and, uh, not a J and J Steel Company out of Berlin didn't put that up, and they, the pylons underneath, they just had steel beams, and they didn't put cement under them. So it kept sagging and sagging and sagging, and we'd jack it up every couple of years, and it was time, and and the entertainers were saying, we need something.
Okay. When are you guys gonna get that skybox?
Skybox. The hard graphics, skybrush.
Yeah, not to flip.
What's the anticipated completion date for the stage and?
Uh, it'll be done this fall yet. But it'll be ran mixed.
Awesome.
Yeah, we're, we're working on the big entertainer right now.
Do you think there's gonna be future, like concerts outside of the fair?
I think we we plan on some interim stuff, yeah. I mean, it was great, great, the cell, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for hearing that. Any other, uh, public comments?
Share on those, like the paragons, and we leave to share all of the information, so we can help from our city page.
Yeah. Um, city council, I'll ask you for public comments or course comments. Councilor Schultz?
Well, a couple of things I had someone inquiring about that possible stop sign kind of around the old jam's fire part.
Yes.
Sure, that was still on our radar. There's been any insight into that, thinking?
We pulled up, um, sharing, I got to pull up the ordinance, and we're looking at how that was handled in the past, because there was a little bit of confusion as to how that was done. So, um, the next thing was, is we had looked at putting a public safety committee together to review that. But, um, it's my recommendation, we just move forward as a council as a whole, because, um, Chief has outlined several on signs that need attention to, and so that would be my recommendation, is we just move as a council as a whole, and we can start the ordinance process, probably here in October, if the clerk agrees with that. I'm working with the codifier right now, too, and he is giving me, um, different ordinances that have updated verbiage in it, so that is definitely something that we can get put together and send it off to him, and have him take a look before it's brought to you guys.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
I guess, maybe you're gonna say, which language, like, how do we know, like, what falls into having a correct stop sign at certain corners? Or how does that work?
Yeah, I mean, we have the DOT provides guidance on how that, how you, how you establish that, so we would follow along with that before we would move forward. And part of it was, is that, um, and chief and, um, I and, um, and Sherry's been in some of our, in our pass-through conversations, it's just making the best of our time when we're doing an ordinance. So, you know, knowing you have one, but then it was more and more kept coming up to the chief's attention, um, that there was either no parking signs, stop signs. I know he's been working with the school about loading zone and things like that. So it was our thought that if we could get them all put together and then do the ordinance at once, and then that way that would save us from having to do an ordinance, public hearing for each sign that comes up, so.
Is there a public hearing that's required for every new stop sign?
Yeah, it's anytime you update it, and it's, so anytime we update ordinances, you have to have a public hearing. Which requires three readings, so that was why we were thinking it would be best to make the most out of not just one sign at a time, but make sure we had, and I know Chief, like I said, he's, he's got a listing of them going, so.
Good. Kind of leads into just, um, another comment that I heard mentioned, uh, you know, seeing the officers' presence around pick up and drop off for school times. Um, I don't see them, see you guys kind of moving out of their car much, but in case somebody parked wrong, they're curious if you guys tell people, or how you kind of confront that issue, if people are in the wrong area or holding up or?
And we've had several meetings with the school, uh, to try and help figure out, because consolidating the ELC and elementary into one building, it was a little bit of a, little bit of a learning curve to start with. Um, we have responded to at least a couple, um, complaints that came into Moscom about parking, so we responded to those accordingly and addressed those. And then tried to work with the school district to figure out what, what signage on Miller would help the most with pick up and drop off. So then we can figure out whatever that looks like, and then we'll suggest that for the signage on Miller. Um, so specifically on Miller, my suggestion would be on Miller from Eighth Street to the entrance to the elementary, be no parking at any time. Um, that's for visibility for walkers, that's for the buses making the corner to get in front of the school, there's no parking at all, and then the rest of Miller, the no parking is loading them only. Right now, the signage says no parking, seven AM to four PM. So everybody who parks and waits to pick up their kiddo, technically we're violating it kind of, because, and so people show up like an hour and a half early, and they get their camping chairs and sit up in front of the elementary, and waiting for the tailgate to start. Uh, so, so we have been called, so we've addressed a few people that were specifically, um, parked and like left their cars there, not waiting to get kiddos. Um, and I can say, as you need to do, Mr. Mayor, send it to the whole council. The other signage we talked about is uh, no parking on Freedom Street, um, creating signage for the parks, so we know what the general rules are, the hours, so it's easily accessible for everybody to see. Um, the stop sign is Spencer and Third, as you mentioned. The downtown parking, I know that's an issue that has come up a few times, but our ordinance does not match our signage. Yeah, the the times are a little off for overnight parking. And then, um, as our housing development comes in on South Calhoun for, um, the Meadows, I'm encouraging that be looked at as probably no parking down that way, because we, as narrow as it is already, if the residents or visitors are parking on Calhoun, it's gonna get real tight down there. So I feel like that needs to do with that as well. So I'm trying to keep a running list, so then we can uh, address those.
Thanks, Mayor. I would say we want to make sure we had a conversation with the the fairgrounds, because, I mean, sometimes I know it could impact, like during their events, to, you know, we can make sure there's no parking down there, and we want to make sure that they're part of that conversation, that we're not causing issues.
So right now, we've gotten, we're keeping the, keeping the list, or keeping, running the list, and then starting to have the conversation with the city manager, figure out who else needs to be at that table, have the conversations for the rest of those signage signatures.
Thank you so much for examining that. That's wonderful. Um, I was gonna ask you, what I was gonna ask you earlier was specifically about the stop sign proposed at, um, on Third Street. Do you, are you in favor?
With the angle parking, I would encourage the stop sign. It will be safer. There's a lot of times where you're stopped at the stop sign, and even when you're at the stop sign, as you start to pull out, there's a car there before you know it. So if it was a four-way stop instead of just stop going north and south on Spencer, I think that would increase safety, walkability. It could be a good idea.
Yeah, okay, good.
Good to hear. I did just have somebody that wanted me to pass along her phrases for Nikki signing up, um, her little one for youth sports. I think she must have not, like, through the very end of it all, and he reached out asking, you know, if she was supposed to be on the list or not, what was going on, and so she went on right away and took care of it and got her on there. She's appreciated the small town temperature.
We'll make sure.
I'm doing that, so.
Good to hear.
Can speak highly enough about it.
Great to hear. Thank you.
No, great.
Okay. Councilor McFerrin?
Uh, yes, um, I have a couple of items. One is from a resident on Walnut Street. I believe it's Walnut Street. Anyway, it's Walnut that transitions to Short Street. And some time ago, we had talked about doing the roadway, the bump program, speed bumps and things, and he wanted to know what was happening as far as drivers. Yes. He wanted to know if there was any development on that or the roadway, because there's still a lot of, um, high-speed traffic, I guess, and uh, the, he's curious about the access in the new development and whether or not the new owner is creating a turnaround. In the event there is emergency vehicles needing to get in there, because right now with utility vehicles and delivery drivers, there, it's really difficult to get in, turn around, they have to back out.
Two, two related issues there. Did we have any other work on that?
So the speed bump, I would have to, we have not had the opportunity to follow through and and check on the speed bump. Um, so I, I would probably reach out just to Leo, just from his knowledge with streets, if he has, and then talk to chief and see, um, again, what what we can utilize to control, um, because it it may be a possibility that that's something that we wouldn't put in.
Can we hand that to, to, to you, Leo, to to take a look at?
Yeah, and kind of get that. They're usually more political than engineering.
Okay.
But I can, I can tell you what other communities have done. I can tell you, I've been at communities that put them in, tore them out, you know, you just, it is an issue sometimes. Some people like them, some people hate them.
Yeah.
But I know Bettendorf recently, in my neighborhood, has put some in recently, very different ones than what I've used to be, and they're not small. They're not like a bump like that. They're probably five foot wide.
The big white ones, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah. And, um, the only reason I know about them, it's not a way I drive, I ride my bike. Um, and they have main, they have, they have cutouts on the sides. We have bikes, so so there might be a little more engineering than I think in there, but, um, like, we've never, I've never seen one of our design, had them designed yet. Our company's done later.
To fix that problem.
But I can look into it.
Yeah, that, so that was, um, that individual. And then I had another individual that lives on Calhoun Street, uh, approached me, and she's concerned about, uh, delinquent landlords because. Because um she is a walker and she's around town and. She she's concerned about the dilapidation of structures, predominantly housing and um. The safety and the beautification of the property, so nothing that's gonna be worked out tonight, but I told her I'd pass it on and. Uh you know, maybe pass it on to Eddie or Terry to look at.
They've been working diligently with all of the new friends and um and again, I would. Say Eddie's been very thorough and works closely with Terry and they. He's provided quite a few letters, I mean, we could bring back some statistics at the next meeting with you. Um but it kind of leads into, you know, Ken and I have been speaking about or talking about. Maybe the next phase of um urban renewal would be looking at. Possibly the taking the tip similar to what we do with the matching grants for businesses. That we look at an opportunity to utilize some tip dollars for matching grants to improve those homes. And make those available to residents, um so that's something that we're. We're gonna look to bring back to council, so you can look at those things, but we'll continue to.
And I can forward you the. That's what I was gonna say, if there's a specific area, because what happens is this Terry kind of oversees the bigger. Projects, so like dilapidated buildings, um garages with roofs that are falling in, he sees that, or Eddie administers with the paperwork. Um Eddie does more of like the outside, like garbage, junk, um junked vehicles, those types of things. So if you give us that information, you can get the information to Terry and you can take a look.
I'll give you the um the individuals' names and addresses and and then I had another individual on, actually up farther up on Short Street. Um be concerned about the park multiplex uh park trash. Going over, um so trash is an issue and. Uh also uh because that is a west wind and you've got a a cornfield there, there's nothing to stop. The snow drift or the corn stalks or whatever, so they um were going to put up a fence, but. I can forward you that information.
Yeah, we had spoke on that um a couple seasons ago and um. Since it's not the city's property, at one time the city was placing um like a snow fence up, but. Again, the liability, it's not the city's property, but I believe the farmer had. Um then opted to put in a snow fence to kind of hold from the corn stalks and. You know, those plastic bags that are flying everywhere, but I know, again, our staff stays, you know, very much on top of. The garbage and and trying, and I have to say to the property owner, I mean, I mean, again, he works with. Um when they reach out to him, he works with them and he's got a maintenance person on the site now. And so, I mean, he's he's working hard to try to make those. Those changes and staying on top of those things, I want to just commend him for.
Right, thank you.
Just a quick add on to it for like the urban development idea. Um I know we have, and maybe this is like just stupid or unheard of, but like we have a lot of single. Ranch homes and I feel like, wouldn't it be cool if we could add a story to some of those? So people wouldn't have to move out when they need bigger homes, I'm speaking from experience, I would rather like live in town. And have a bigger home, um and I could easily put another story on my house, but obviously I don't have the money for that. So that's a really cool, like, opportunity for families, I think, that want to stay in their home, but just want to. Beautify or update or create that extra space, but might not be able to go this way, they'd have to go up. I I know there's different restrictions and stuff depending what neighborhoods maybe that you're in, but and I don't really get it all that.
I've got a note here and we can certainly take a look at that and then follow up with Terry and find out what our restrictions are and. Um and again, it's, you know, what can we do?
Um and then uh also, I got some correspondence from a resident on Calhoun about the brush. I just wanted to check with Lee, did you follow up on that? Okay, good, I won't need to talk about that. Um and then I did get an email, I think it was addressed to Omar and I. Um a student, a journalism student at Iowa is creating a um she's working on a story. About West Liberty and is really intrigued because um this person said that. We're one of the few rural towns in Iowa that seems to not be declining, we're being steady or increasing. Um and so they wanted to um see if I could point them in the right direction to move forward the story. Back them with some families that are extremely involved in the community and that would be interested in working with them. Um so I I think I just forwarded it to Sherry, so um Sherry has this person's email address. If you just put it in maybe like in the minutes or something, um this person's name is um Sekithi Shanga or. Shankar Harari, I don't know how to make them. Shankar Harari. It's a really cool last name, I just can't pronounce it that well, um so if anybody else. Has like families they want to forward to me or their contact information, I'll be reaching out to this person tomorrow, like end of day probably. That's all I got.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Martinez. Excellent, City Manager Gertz. Thank you, everybody, move on to new business, discussion and appropriate action for the comments marching band event assistance request application. I see the promoter's name is one Ashley Smith.
This is the second annual Comet Classic, which is a marching band competition that we're hosting at our school. Uh the whole thing was supposed to take place at the new athletic complex, which is clearly not ready yet, so um. Last year, we had nine, nine or ten visiting bands, we raised like seven thousand dollars, which almost directly to the marching band, and they're very expensive kids, so it was. They cost so much money, um so that really helped a lot, so we're, we have nine bands again registered to come, um. Four of them are four A bands, which are gigantic and sometimes have um charter buses or one of them has a semi trailer for all of their band members. Yeah, um so we would just ask for help with no parking signs, um it's a different like layout than we did last year, last year we used Dutton for warmups. This year, we're gonna use space at the middle school for one warmup and space at the elementary school for another warmup. Um so I just included the map that I made for schools and like. This is where I'm planning to send their buses and trailers, so we just need some help with maybe no parking signs and then. Um we would ask that the same area we could block off as we did last year, which is the corner of Max and Hasan Elm. All the way down to the high school entrance uh by the football field, uh because we'll put the biggest trailers there, so if there's a schedule, if you want it, it's Saturday, October seventh. Um what questions do you?
Control issues you're gonna need to rely on or need for or?
Uh mostly unexpected park at the high school parking lot and they all pretty much just. On right then, you know, down on the street or or um. I don't know, we don't have any issues with traffic, oh, last year really just besides doing the like the big, the big stuff, like the equipment stuff. Um but, yeah, I don't.
Chief, any thoughts about this plan here? Did we have enough space just blocking off that chunk of Elm from Max into the south, that south entrance?
Yeah, because most of the trailers, we're gonna park in the like the grassy area behind the concession stands, like that would be where most of the trailers go and then we'll open up the gates. That lead them out into Kimberly Park when they exit, um but the the two biggest schools have semis and some of those we wanted to let park on Elm Street. And then like our overflow parking will be First Church United and we have bus parking at the ASAP Business, they said we could use our parking lot, so. Um I think we'll be getting vehicles in and getting them out pretty smoothly.
This is no small feat of planning this thing, yeah.
It's freaking gigantic. It's great and it's a good opportunity for the kids to participate in their own fundraising, like the kids work this event, like they do the concessions. They work like they they do all the stuff, like the kids do all the jobs, which is good, cause there's eighty of them, or they should. But um it's, yeah, and it's nice, I I want to die, like we don't have to walk around the community selling stuff, we don't have to ask people to buy things. We just have all these bands come and perform and then.
Was the entrance fee is donation or do you have the?
No, it'd be dollars. You can make a bigger donation. Surely accept that.
Great, I just want to clarify, so we'll have um the police department. Work on the no parking signs.
Okay.
And then we can always, I can have Chief coordinate maybe with the street department, they can assist.
Thank you, you said something about opening up to Kimberly, do we need to put some barricades and people on parking in Kimberly to come to the event?
Well, gee, I didn't think about that, but um.
Depending on what you're using Kimberly for, is what I'm asking.
Well, right, we we're just, we we don't know if like every band dad driving a trailer is gonna be able to back it up. So we were planning on, like speaking from experience, uh we were planning on having the trailers like drive into that grassy area and then drive out. And it's Kimberly Park to leave.
So not as much parking, but just as an access.
Yeah, just to get out in case they're not, yeah, in case they don't experience back in the box.
And then I would also say, uh Council Mayor, since we have fire department here, these are some major freaks. So we would want to make sure we did that communicated, so they know where, what those street closures are, because I would think that these would become the main streets. Emergencies, so we want to make sure. We would update them on that, on that event as well, normally just the downtown ones, um but with this one. Which is a great event, but it'd be awesome, I mean, I just think that those are some heavy traveled areas that they would probably take to.
Sure, I mean, to clarify, we don't need to like close down Seventh Street, or we don't need to close down Miller Street, I just don't want the. Charter buses to have to try to like that.
congestion of traffic, just so they're aware.
Okay.
Just the in case situation.
Sure.
Is there anything else that fire or EMS do you think that we need from that?
Uh well, with the influx of people, maybe.
Yeah.
EMS might side might be a little more busy. It's just one day, correct?
Oh, yeah, it's like twelve before.
We'll just make sure we send um.
Do I do that or do you do that?
No, it's if upon council's approval, then I'll just make sure that we include the fire and EMS on the event. Again, I mean, just simply because of the section in the area and then what's the. We always send it to Chief and the streets and and we'll include everything.
Yeah, make sure we guys have a map.
That's something City Hall would coordinate this to with police and fire event.
And for the thirty annual one, it'll be at the new athletic complex, so we'll never have to do this again.
There you go. You're gonna be, have a band performing on the new uh stage at the. All right, we have a good uh discussion here, is there any other questions that need to be talked about?
Sure, I need to abstain from voting, cause I'm biased, or might as well, yes.
I I s- I suppose you abstain.
Okay.
Um is there a motion to approve this request? Movement to approve their request and any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, aye, all opposed, no? The motion carries four to zero with one supposed. Councilmember Stan. We'll move on to uh item eight, we on eight, eight B. Discussion and appropriate action from the city council and the West Liberty Fire Department. So, we met. September twelfth, thank you, I wouldn't have been able to remember the date exactly, but um there were. It wasn't the entire council, but several of us met to kind of look at what would be the next steps. For this and out of that came basically three recommendations that, and I think. The the task force committee members from the city council. Uh and and I think all of us kind of agreed that it's important that we kind of have the full council weigh in on where you want to go from here. So, three things came out of that meeting, you know, there've been a variety of kind of. It's been some start and stop in this whole process with the the idea of creating a a new twenty AE fire agency, fire EMS agency. Um there've been a few kind of attempts to get it completed and we haven't been able to reach a an agreement that. Is uh workable for all parties yet, we haven't been able to agree on a consultant who can help us get get across the line yet. Uh so, three things came out of that meeting that we were gonna bring back to the entire council, one was to. Meet together in some in some format with there's a gentleman. Who was instrumental in helping Solen set up their agency, his name is Greg Morris, and he's been put forward as somebody who who can have some insight into this. I had a phone conversation with him, I think maybe some others have talked to him, I know we've talked to other people at Solen as well. Um so we're gonna just propose that we move forward with that, we need to discuss. He recommended we start with maybe just a a few of us, um there there was also an idea of doing a work session with the entire council. At last night's meeting with the Rural Fire District trustees and the fire department, the fire district president. Requested that if we all meet as a council with Mr. Morris, that the trustees also be invited. Um so that's that's an option, we could do one big, you know, kind of work session. The second uh idea or recommendation that came out of that meeting was that city. Uh take the documents that the task force has created, worked really hard on to produce. That would be the basis of creating a new fire EMS agency and. City has had some concerns about those that haven't been resolved, so we talked about taking those to an attorney from our side. And seeing, instead of like our attorney has been writing memos kind of to respond to the documents, but instead of. Doing that, maybe taking those and having our attorney um write the document the way that they would uh want to see it. In a way that works hopefully for for everybody, including city, and then bring that back to uh probably to the task force. The as a way to continue moving that that forward. The third thing was, I I know we've all felt strongly that we want to have some real expert input on this entire thing. So just to continue searching for who that, who that would be. Um perhaps there will be some ideas that come out of the phone conversation, we haven't really been able to identify somebody that uh has been kind of. Where there's a consensus from all the parties that, you know, that they could follow the consultant's guidelines, but maybe. I don't know, we just need to keep looking and see if we can find somebody to really be an expert to play into, you know, to to speak to us about this, so. Thoughts, council, about those three uh kind of recommendations that came up, yeah?
So um and I'm looking over at the administrative staff too, because I wanna make sure that I'm remembering it correctly. When we discussed meeting with Greg Morris, I believe we had directed it to be a work session. So it wasn't really a question, it was yes, let's do a work session, and then um I had mentioned. And also inviting the city administrator, um and then in the email, later email with Lee, I suggested perhaps inviting the mayor, the. Solen mayor, um or a- and anybody who, so in my eye, it was like this public. Kind of um way for the council, all the council members to. Learn from, you know, them and what they went through this process to ask those scary questions or the. The questions that we've been like, so how does this work, how did you do this, you know, and Josh, you were there, but I'm looking kind of like at Ashley and Omar. And then, so that was what I thought the direction was. But it sounds like mayor, it might not have been as clear to you, so I just want to clarify that, maybe we can do that as a council, I don't know.
Whatever you guys want to do, I'm fine with it.
Um and then also for the expert, um we also mentioned possibly looking um just, I guess, Mark Left. Lefler and trying to track that attorney down to see if maybe that could be. Lefler and trying to track that attorney down to see if maybe that could be the possible attorney expert. Um. That could help us, since they no longer work for that firm, that I think the. The city had already done business with in the council, that would have been a conflict. But if he in fact has left that firm, then maybe we could um seek guidance from that attorney as well.
That was the attorney that helped Solen set up their.
Yeah.
Do the initial work.
That's what I understand anyway. Um. And then. I think that's it.
Okay, we also, to the attorney point, we also um. Our, our attorney, Steve Havre Camp, I think early on had recommended. Reaching out to another firm potentially to help with the paperwork as well.
Yeah.
Um, so it seems like they have a few ideas there, I guess that could be.
I don't remember that, but. Heck, yeah.
Yeah.
He recommended Lynch Dallas with Omar Stone.
Okay.
But he's had the experiences while. Run through a lot of like reunion and negotiations and those agreements, so that was through mediation. So that was his recommendation.
So let's maybe, maybe let's take these one at a time. How do you wanna? Do you, or do you wanna meet with Greg Morris from Solen and perhaps others, I mean, from Solen, whoever we wanna?
I think meeting with Greg Morris would obviously be very beneficial to. Get our questions answered as long as well as, you know, I think it'd be. Important to invite the rural trustees, cause there's no need to have all these separate meetings with the same individual, and if they're okay with it, of course, get together all as one. Cause then we can also give us a chance to just hear all around the people.
Yeah, I think the reason that I thought the mayor. And the city administrator was important as well is because they are actively. Doing their job to run that city while the agency is is in place, so getting their perspective of how it's working, you know, and. And what their relationship looks like with their um board and things like that would be a good perspective. I think Greg is a firefighter, is that right, Eric?
Yeah.
Yep, so he kind of took it from that point of view as well. I think it would be be beneficial to also pool in the city aspect as well, if they're available. I don't want it to delay anything if they're not, I'd rather just talk to Greg if if that's what would stop it, but.
Yeah.
I think it's a good. Counsel, just um just to be clear, so um what I'm hearing from you is you're looking at a panel. For a work session, so a panel of these um individuals. Um, that you would look to have come in. And have the conversation with. Is there anyone else on that panel that you would want to include? And I'm thinking, and and I'm thinking to research the attorney and maybe see if that person's, I mean.
Oh, available on that day as well. Yep, I mean, does that sound good?
I guess I had another thought or suggestion, it's, I I worry that the, like, when you have too many cooks in the kitchen, things just get, they become kind of show that, like. Like last night, we had a lot of people at the community center, and it just. Uh, I don't know, it was, it was super effective. So, does the task force have a couple people from the council, a couple people from the fire, a couple people from rural and the mayor on it, right? Would it be more effective to have the task force meet with Greg Morris? Get a recommendation, figure out this is what we should do, and then bring it back to us to approve. Like, I don't necessarily feel like I need to sit in the same room as the, as seventy other people to talk about, like, I feel like we've kind of talked it to death, and I would rather just. Figure out what's a way we could get it done quickly, like, like, good, good, but quickly. I also wonder, like, can we do two things at the same time, like, not search for the consultant, cause I think that's just. Time and money that we don't need to spend, but like, can we send the draft that we have to either our attorney or the attorney he recommends, like, can we send it then tomorrow? Can we also schedule a meeting with Greg Morris, and then, like, that's like, like, take the two-pronged approach to get it figured out, but like, this is.
Yeah.
Dragging out much longer than it has to.
Well. Go ahead. Go ahead.
So, I hear, I think those ideas are awesome, but. The task force is. Most, I mean, to me, like, maybe I'm the only city person, I don't know, but like, we are like, let's do this already, so it's not us you need to convince, really. So, if it was up to the task force, we, this would have been done a long time ago, so that's why bringing in the people who actually did it. Were, was what the task force thought, maybe this will calm some nerves, like, maybe this will get the other council members excited to say, okay, let's vote on this, let's get it done, you know? Or, or maybe there's something we find out from them, we're like, oh, that's a lot different than us, we won't be able to do this, like, some kind of lightbulb. Moment is what I'm looking for, but if y'all think it's a waste of time, then I say let's just vote on it. And and do as Mister Anderson, not the mayor, but Mister Anderson suggested last night.
So you think we should pass it how it is now, you don't think it needs to be changed or updated, or?
Uh, we don't, me personally, the only thing that I would wanna see updated before we vote on it is what would happen, say, in a year, and we're like. Okay, there's no fixing this, it's not gonna work for us, what do we do now to go back? You know what I mean? I don't want there to be confusion between the rural or the fire, or the volunteers or us, on how we go back and try to reassess. Now, how Mister Anderson explained it, and and a lot of others who have made this suggestion too, is we create the board. And they are able to, like, kind of build up and work with the fire department on what is working, what isn't, and kind of change those bylaws and things, and hopefully, we would never have to go back. But that's the, literally the only thing that I worry about is, even if it's ten years from now, like, okay, how do we go back without going into litigation again? I don't ever want that, just like Josh said last night, I don't ever want that to happen again. So I feel like the draft that we have right now doesn't have a very particular plan for if that were to happen.
Which I do think giving, you know, turning that over to our lawyer to just kind of take what you guys have all built and worked hard on, kind of. Worded or make the issues into his, not his way, but the way of thinking that would work for us. And then taking that back and being like, okay, what do we need to work out, change? Do that, those points, if they need to be changed or not, and then obviously enter the amount of changes that are made. I think that would go down the pipeline pretty smoothly, as well as simultaneously at the same time getting this. Panel together and meeting. And just kind of doing it on the floor. I would kind of like to see more of a, like a very strong consensus from. You know, council as a whole, and either gay or nay on if we're creating an agency or not. I know we do a lot of consensuses on. Which way are we moving, which directions are we moving for each separate thing, but I don't know if it'd be appropriate to just vote to say, yes, we're creating an agency. It's in the process and ongoing and tackling. Or not, you know, however that works, I don't just, I don't know the best way to do that, but I feel like. Be nice to have that happen. To be clear to the citizens of West Liberty. The work has been done, we're moving this direction, and we're tackling it.
Think the trick has always been. To create the agency, we have to kind of finalize some of these details, which have been the sticking point, so it's kind of like. We've always been moving toward that, the goal, but. To say, yes, we will, without having the details worked out as far, cause you gotta have a detail. That's the way I feel about it, but I should, should we meet? If if we wanna meet with Greg Morris and perhaps others from Solen. I guess to go back to that question, how do you wanna approach that? There's an idea of doing a small group, perhaps the task force. Um, or a larger group with. The entire council and the fire district trustees. Have a consensus on how you wanna do that. I'm fine either way, I think either one of these can can work fine.
And I'm fine either way, it was that.
I think my only concern is, like, if we do it in a large, the larger aspect, this one asks you guys, would you be okay with it just being like the president? And the vice president of, like, the trustees, or do you want, like, all the rural trustees to be there as a whole?
I don't think we can really make that.
I think that's open to control, yeah.
Cause you know, I mean, I, last night was cool, but you know, there wasn't a lot of people.
Yeah, I think they would, first, I think they would eliminate it, I don't think the whole group would come in.
They didn't communicate that they wanted the leadership roles of the rural trustees. I watched the video again this morning. Communicate that the leadership roles, like the president, your vice president, those types of people would be the ones they wanted included.
Well, I would, I would say.
I would encourage the entire council to.
Right.
Be a part of this.
I think that's important, that we all get answered.
Good, I know Josh asked his question, Ashley asked his question, and then you start bouncing that.
So the research.
Along, I don't mean along the process, but um. We, the fire department, equipment, structure, the. Vehicles, falls under city of West Liberty Fire Department. And so. I care about everybody, whether you live in the city or whether you live in the rural. You you can not do that, of course, you care about them. But when it comes to fiduciary responsibility. Our first priority is the citizens of West Liberty, because we have no jurisdiction outside of the city of West Liberty. Antax rule, we have no authority over the citizens in the rural. Our first priority is the city citizens that live within our city boundaries. I think. From the cities, from my perspective. We wanna make sure that, you know, the city is covered, because ultimately. We are responsible a hundred percent to make sure that our citizens are covered for fire emergency services. That that's mandatory, that's without saying. Um, the rule, same with them, it's on them to figure out how, who they wanna contract with, or they wanna build, or whatever they wanna do. But that's why when we're going through these negotiations, it's important for us to make sure that we're comfortable with. Whatever we go into, or get out of, or um rules, regulations, membership, bylaws, everything. Is equal, everything is not, uh, there's no disparities, everybody's covered. So, I would uh entertain the fact that um. We send the draft over to Wilfrid Stone with Lynch Dallas, uh, they represent. Uh, quite a bit of municipalities, and they're quite uh good uh experts in drafting agreements. So I would say send the draft to him, have him review it, and then uh give us a draft on. From the city municipal side, what we need to look for, what we need to safeguard. So in the event, something happens. We're not stuck with our pants down, and like, oh no, uh, we're gonna be arguing over equipment, building vehicles again, and. Somebody's gonna be out of. Uh, scanneling for service. Does that make sense?
Does it sound like, does that sound good to council if we send it to Wilford Stone?
So I just.
Although we, we still are typing with city attorney for that.
Mayor and council, I just wanna go back to to the meeting, so again. I think what would be very hopeful is the clarity to make sure that there is a consensus that the, the direction that this council. Is is based on the existing draft twenty eighteen agency, that. Because I think that. In communicating with the trustees and with the firing EMS association. And, and you can have them correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's concerned that. You know, we may go a different direction and go back to an agreement, and I think with. Based on my perception and my understanding is, is that it's the agency agreement. That is what the focus is being asked on, not to look at other or any other directions.
Right.
So when we talked the other night, I said, you know, the council also has to understand, what are you willing to, for your concessions, what are you willing to not? Do or look at, or what are you willing not to have expertise, so you can continue to move on with the existing draft agreement?
Mm-hmm. I don't know if we know that, I guess I'll speak for myself, but I don't know if we know precisely the answer to that, I mean, I think everyone agrees we need some real expert. Opinion on this whole setup, and. All the more so when there's a lot. Cross between the parties, you know, there's, there's been quite a bit, and it's. It's seen, been evident that there's been quite a bit of mistrust between the parties, so. As I said in the meeting last night, um. It's unusual to create a partnership with an entity that has litigation against you, it's not a common thing that is done, it's quite unusual. And um, you know, this is something that's trying to partner these two entities together. Um, if there's a pragmatic reason to do that, which is what we've been moving toward, it's important to have all of the i's dotted and all the t's crossed, and all of the details worked out. Before that is agreed to, because it's been contentious. So I would, I would personally. Um. Caution the council to be. Take the the time and investment, we need to make sure that it's very detailed for that reason. Um, but yes, I think that's the clear consensus of the council, is that we wanna look at the documents that have been created to create the agency and see if we can continue in that direction. That's what you're asking?
That's what I'm asking, and although it's also, you know, because when you're, when you. When you're working with the attorney, I I think you also need to be very clear as to what you're asking of that document. So. Again, it saves time, so if you're all in a consensus that you know exactly what you're asking of that draft document.
Yeah.
It will save time to move it forward and make sure those things are covered. You know, as they're going through it.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah, I I know we've all agreed to say we send the draft, but. I think we should give them an opportunity to fix the red flags that the attorney had sent to us, cause they haven't been able to see them. Maybe they can fix that and re. I guess um readdress the drafts, and then we can send the drafts, and make sure, like, hey, you know what, this is what. We thought we could fix, and maybe this is something we're uncertain that we could address, maybe the attorney could take care of. Then we, we can knock those out before we actually send it to attorney, and then. Get, get something back from the attorney, like, well, you know, you used to need to address these things before I can.
That's, that's sort of fine with me, I, would you be all right if we, I guess. My recommenda- the recommendation that came out of our last meeting was that we send the documents to an attorney from from our side, so they can start working on that right away, right? If we, if you, if, if you want, there was the last memo, so the task force have been working on the documents. And then as that process, the process has been, the task force has created a draft.
Right.
And then um, the city attorney has reviewed it and written um. A memo about it, and then the task force has written another draft and incorporated some of of those things. And then we sort of gone through that process a few times as a task force, and then at some point we. We said, we feel like we're spinning our wheels.
Cause there's the same, some of the same things are in the most recent memo, that was in the previous one, so that's why I was confused of why is it confidential, cause the task force already has heard these opinions.
I don't know why that last one was.
Can we just?
Confidential.
I mean, as, I think that was just the attorney's standard practice, right, like?
Let's take a look at that document and see if we can send it.
Really, it's a big deal.
And since we're all on board, really.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. We'll review it, we'll review that.
Well, actually. And and if I, if I understand this correctly, the attorney cannot stamp something as confidential, that it's the client. That has that power to deem if something is confidential or not.
That makes sense to me, I don't know the reality of it, but yeah, let's, let's talk about what the attorney and.
Well, you can take the advice.
Yeah.
The only caveat to that is, because if there is a case in going to court.
Yes, and he, you're right.
That is regarded as part of the information from our attorney about our case, yeah, so. Yeah, yes, so that's why, that's why they are so not right.
The complication of creating a part.
Yeah.
With someone.
If it's. If it wasn't, if it wasn't for litigation. Then I think that would be all over.
But the task force.
Me and Mindy, we're dependents, just like you are.
Right.
Um, so I think we should be able to see it as we're in the same boat, correct?
Right. Like, the fire department is not suing us.
Yeah.
Right, I know, but um I think there is some concern I've heard over the fact that the, the volunteers and the rural are very closely connected. So they're concerned about a bias.
Let's do this, let's do this, I don't know if we need to, we'll litigate this.
We, the rural and city, there's no side that we're picking, we're gonna do our job.
Yeah.
That's why I do it, that's why Eric does it, Omar.
I would, I would love to have a. Firm reaffirmation of that fact from the fire department.
I just gave it to you. I just gave it to you.
So Mister.
I'm just gonna ask again, so we, I could take the. I'm just gonna ask again, so we, I could take the memo, I could take the draft. I can update it with the items, redline it. And then I guess what would be the harm of sharing that with the task force if I'm the one doing the work based on the memo that the attorney's drafted? Because it's not gonna have the memo in it, it's gonna have the recommended changes that are redlined. And then that could go back to the task force. So it's not actually handing over the memo, but it is updating it based on what was in the memo, then you might as well just send it to Haver Camp and have a free draft. That was the only reason why I brought that up is because I, if if we didn't want, if we weren't gonna go that route, then I'm saying here's the other option.
Two-pronged approach, I'd like to ask for a consensus for us to send the uh. The the documents to Wilpers, will Lynch Dallas. As well as in some format, get the latest recommendations as clearly as possible.
Well, Lynch Dallas also have the memo of our attorney, I don't wanna create. That bias or create a a prime, a primer of what they're looking at when they see that draft. I don't think that would be fair. I have an email into the attorney asking to release that. So that whomever, so right now, if it is. Cause that was their recommendation, number one, but to ask if we can release that over so they can review the. And I, and again, I followed up with Eric and Mindy and made sure that we had all the current documents. I just wouldn't, I wouldn't want the the other, the new attorney to like see the memo. And be like primed, like, you know what I mean, I wanted, I would want them to have fresh eyes. Maybe they have another opinion or a second opinion, or it would be interesting to see if they came up with the same things. Without seeing Haver Camps.
And she does, she doesn't want the memo to go.
I wouldn't want the memo, I would wanna see if they come up with the same thing.
Let's just send the, just send the document, the draft documents.
Again, just to be clear, we have to get permission from our attorney to do that because. Because we're the clients of of of. And so we can't pursue another attorney for something. That's working on the same project.
But this was somebody that he recommended early on, potentially he would go for it, we sent her back. And we did ask already to start this process if you would wanted to go for it, but alright, I feel like we do have a consensus there. We can uh, so we'll. Um, sorry, long conversation here, but it's an important topic, so we I think have a consensus, please. Correct me if I'm wrong, do not be shy, make sure we get this right. I think we have a consensus that we meet together as a council and the rural fire district trustees. And I, we talked about like limiting the number, but I'm uncomfortable with asking them to limit the number, I think their entire trustee. You know, board is is invited as far as I'm concerned, if any of them aren't.
Can send it as we did, but we can leave it to Mr. Brand if he wants to organize his.
Open meeting, so I encourage them all to be there for doing it that way. Let's see. And then the other consensus is to send the draft documents that we have to Lynch Dallas. Pending the release of our current attorney, which is uh, I think respectful of them, their word. Is that, am I right?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to do those, you think?
Alright, we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
Just to be clear.
Please be clear.
So you want a work session?
A work session.
And you want the council as a whole? Rural trustees. Firing EMS Association members. I really think it's good to make sure. We wanna invite them, and it is a public meeting. But I'm just saying, who do you want the communication to go to for the meeting, so I'm gonna have all three?
Yes, that's.
And then the next piece of it is, is who do you want for the panel, who do you want administration? To reach out to try to coordinate, to plan this. And again, I know it's great. It's it's through Zoom, they would be timing in, right?
No, absolutely, this needs to be in person, I think.
So I mean, I, great, just wanting clear directives here for us.
And the city administrator, let's invite. Invite the three of them, see if they'll come down and have a conversation with us, that sounds great, wonderful. Um, yeah, that would be, like you said, a panel discussion from. From them and we are inviting them as the, as the city of West Liberty and inviting. Also the rural trustees to to join and also the firing EMS to join.
When you would prefer to have the meeting at the.
I would say it's a.
Sorry, but we, we need all of these directives in order to set them.
I also would like to request that either we have both attorneys there from both sides or no interns there.
I think it would be important to. Make sure that the emphasis is the council and the rural trustees and the fire department hearing from Solon. And not going into a lot of discussion out outside of that, so I, yeah, I don't. Maybe let's ask the trustees if they're planning to have their attorney present. Uh, their attorney was present at last night's meeting and our attorney was not, which is um problematic.
Cause we can't tell him not to come. But it would be nice to know we needed our attorney there too, right?
Great. We have some details worked out.
Um, timeframe, when are you guys looking?
Tomorrow.
Timeframe, so that when we are reaching out to set it up, we have a timeframe. We have the special council meeting on the. Guys will be setting later, you could also look at that possibility.
I would say we would need a couple options for them, cause who knows when their council meetings are, we don't want to.
Could there be? Ten three is the next, could it be a work session before the council meeting on October third?
Yes, or ten five and then we can just go down.
Or maybe the next council meeting followed, following that in October, it'd be nice to try as impossible to a council meeting, cause then at least.
For to expedite the time.
It's a balance there, right, cause you can't ask them for next week.
Not that it matters and you certainly hate without me, but chances are more than I won't be here for the next council.
What about the one in the fifth special one?
Yeah, it's on the agenda.
Can we do the work session before the scheduled? Special meeting, does actually would be able to make it if it's earlier.
I have, I have to do drumming rehearsal at seven thirty and no one else can feature.
So it's like what, five, five thirty?
Um, yeah, they start at seven thirty, so. As long as it's before that, I'll be here, what time do you need?
See what we can do and then I will bring this back to you guys and you guys can reply to me individually.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second.
Run for mayor. Although Mayor Ashley's the mayor. Alright, we have a motion and a second for these two items that have been listed to meet with. Representatives from Solon uh in the work session and to send the draft. Twenty eighty agency documents to an attorney pending our attorney's release. Uh, any further discussion? Feel like there were a lot of further discussions. Um, all those in favor, say hi. All opposed, no, motion carries by zero. Excellent, thank you, everybody, it's good.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to HC, a resolution. What, what did I miss? HC, a resolution center into an engineering servicing agreement with Beanster and Kim. For the wastewater treatment plant baseline improvements, is there a motion approved?
Second.
Moving it second to approve this resolution, Mr. Foley.
This is the baseline improvements, we did a report a couple of years ago. Um, we've met with West Liberty Foods now on a central digester. And these kind of improvements still need to be done. We've been talking to the wastewater director and it sounds like more and more problems are coming up with the parts and. All of that, this will give us a ways to get more flow, we can probably negotiate a little more with West Liberty. There's a second follow-on to this, which means if they wanted more tremendous more capacity, there'd have to be another part, but that's not. That's why this all base, we'd like to get it surveyed this year. But that we could get it going and possibly get our other construction next year. The big kick is we we did add in here a preliminary phase where we will negotiate with. West Liberty Foods and come up with like a baseline or a, some kind of a framework for an agreement that we've been back.
Would that mean to share costs or something?
Approximately half, I can't remember.
One percent for West Liberty Foods and forty-three point nine percent.
That's a hundred percent based on the flows and loadings and we have presented this to them, now there were a couple different people. That have retired, but Michelle Boney was there and she's still very much a good talk to the new. President and he, he's very aware of it. I think now is a good time to.
That would involve just. Just a little over two million dollars from our responsibility.
And typically for something that big, we'd go to either your reserves in the wastewater fund. Or a, or a SRF line, I think the last time we looked at your funding, you had enough that you could do it. And I haven't looked at the funding in a while, but it looks like that will be part of that preliminary phase and part of that.
So, so this is the shared cost of data, correct? There is no way down the road and say West Liberty Foods moves. How is that gonna impact?
So what we've, what we've said is that these improvements need to be done.
No matter what?
No matter what. Now, if they moved out of here. Then maybe we would be, that's something we probably need to talk to them about, if they're not gonna use your way for a treatment. If they would put that digester in that they're talking about, then all these improvements would be needed, exactly just the way they are. So if they completely close down in West Liberty. We would definitely still need to make some changes, would it be these changes, maybe slightly different? That's something we need to look at.
Is that a conversation that needs to happen for this though?
It, it happens when we do the agreement with them, cause we'll tie them into the same room, say you're in a, these are twenty-year improvements. So they'd be tied to those twenty-year.
So, okay, so that's definitely a contract.
It is, and we just, so you know, too, we just did this in Clinton with ADM. So ADM was paying a tremendous amount on the Clinton one because. They used to have their own wastewater. We ended up getting a loan through the state of Iowa, the state of Iowa came back and said to ADM almost the exact same thing. So the city's on the hook for twenty years, you need to support this one, so we'll do something and then. That's what I think that framework we were talking about.
So I, later on, I don't wanna find out, we're gonna be on the hook for four points.
We've done it in the past, we've done it with West Liberty Food years ago and we raised their rates.
What has been shared in the past, I know we've done some improvements solely on our dime, but.
In the past, when we did do them on our dime, we did a state repalling form alone and we raised the. At when we did raise the, we raised the rates for the citizens as well as for them.
But we delve, we delve deeper into, again, the breakdown of their. Uh, you know, the bios and the the solids and.
The strength of their.
Threat of their, the treatment that needs to be handled in order to. Yeah, we kind of talked about during the walkthrough. Um, what it would look like, right, to have. To kind of balance these funds and the labor that goes into treating when all that stuff comes through unexpectedly to, you know. Yeah, we get a, we get the trouble. Yeah, so like, what, what would that look like too, maybe during agreements, having this back that, well, you know, if. If we don't make these improvements and it continues to do this, this is the cost that your company is looking to if we. That's an ordinance that says.
They're extremely, they're extremely sensitive to, to their um. If if they would be getting violations from the EPA, they're very sensitive to that, cause that hurts them in, not on financial. It hurts them and and a lot of their ISO type things they try to get. So right now, they're over their limits. But because we're doing a good job of treating, they don't get violations. We like to get it so they're not over there, that's how we want this next one to be, so that's why they'll. They'll come to the table because they don't like the way they are. Literally, some cities would be giving them a violation every single time they were over, even if. You were treated. Doesn't make you do that.
And even with West Liberty Foods, you know, we, we look at the bigger picture of economic development, so we're, you know, we don't wanna just solely focus on West Liberty Foods. We wanna look at if there's an opportunity for, you know, we can market. On that, our treatment plan, so if there's interest from other industries that have similar or will have that need. I mean, these improvements are marketable from that perspective that we have the facilities to support those needs. So again, I mean, that's, you know, not just, yes, West Liberty Food is, is the bigger purposes to why we have the wastewater treatment facility. But we also wanna make sure that, you know, we're also utilizing it as a marketing to other industries that may have interest. In, I mean, to our community, yeah.
That's a good point.
But but in that third framework, we will get all of that squared out and bring it back to you. We would not go full construction until that's all ironed out. But a lot of that has to get gets down into the finer detail.
Is our wastewater treatment plant fairly new?
About every ten years.
A big thing in the news, but I.
About every ten years, these wastewater treatment, because there's never, never enough money to do everything, so you do parts of it. The last time we did it, it was about ten years ago. The biggest thing then was EPA was all over us about stormwater, cause every time it rains. So we put a huge stormwater tank down there, try to reduce that.
And they get a little itchy when you gotta release it into the environment.
They did.
Very itchy.
So just to be clear, the, what this, what this is, I mean, the dollars that we're looking at here is. In item fourteen, correct me if I'm wrong about this, um. So we are contracting with V and K for one hundred thousand dollar design base.
Preliminary design.
Preliminary design, two hundred and ninety-three thousand fifty-four dollars. Uh, for final design and permitting services. And then construction engineering services not to exceed one hundred ninety-six, five twenty-seven. And total of all engineering services not to exceed five hundred eighty-nine thousand five hundred eighty-one dollars.
And that, in a way that, the way it works, that preliminary designing, you expect to see that hundred thousand dollars very quickly. The final design would be next year and then the construction would be in the end of that year, so it's probably two years down the road. Before you see the construction. Contract admin and construction inspection, the last one hundred ninety-six thousand.
And what's um, under these one cost estimate, what's the engineering legal and fiscal, is, is that including like?
We, we do that, we do that early on, we put that, that number's part of, that number was part of the um.
That's seven hundred thousand.
Yeah, that's part of the facility planning and if we would have gone and wanted to get loans for that, some communities will go and try to get a loan just for this. That's the maximum amount that you can ask for, so we put that in a kind of an overall design plus. That's the maximum amount that you can ask for, so we put that in a kind of an overall design plus funding plus. Whatever you might have to do for loans, attorneys.
So these are basically the ceiling costs.
The whole ceiling cost, but we're 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 always under that.
Okay.
And and this is, I didn't get a chance to review this with you, this is um, in our. Scheduled in our capital improvement plan for.
I'm gonna get with Leo, we had it, um, but we need to update our CIP and then we'll bring it up to date in line with. The plan, I mean, it was in our plan to do, and I just wanna make sure. I've got a note right here to follow up with Leo, because Leo and we'll, we work together on the CIP. Um, it's our streets and um, our facilities and.
Yeah.
And Leo always works hand in hand with us to make sure, because we've had to rearrange some of those schedules, um, and so we'll make sure we have it updated and. It'll get reapproved by council once.
For the whole plan, I mean, do we need to look at that before council approves this project, then is my.
No, it's it's a planned uh, capital improvement project.
Yeah.
I I do believe the last time we looked at the wastewater treatment fund, it was. It had enough money in there to pay for this, now I'm not saying that you want to do that construction, you still may wanna take a loan, we could make that decision later.
Yeah.
But I think if you had to, I think you have to, um, to pay for your part.
Yeah. Right.
Leo, I don't enter your job.
It's not.
You're good at it, but I still understand.
Wastewater treatment plant design, to be straight with you, is very specialized anymore. I do not hardly do any of, well, I I I might do some of it, but we have people that that's all they do. That is it, they they're called the process engineers, when you see bills come in, they're the highest paid people in our firm for doing that kind of. And primarily what they'll do a lot of times is they they tell us, the civil engineers. Sometimes if it's a pump station, I can do that, or or bar screen, I can do that, but the process part of it, I just don't, you have to, you have to do it all with them.
It's very lucrative field, like this, uh, years ago, when we had a third party, the C contract member to run our treatment plant. It was nearly a million dollars a year. That's the cost, it the cost is to have this third party operator. Oh, my goodness, and that was about eight years ago, two thousand seventeen, oh.
Is this the first part you can give us, Leo?
That is about right.
Six hundred thousand.
That is, it's built pretty significantly lower than you'd get in, it really is. If you look at, if you look at the percent construction, that's pretty low.
What would be typical, that's eighteen.
So so that's not eighteen percent.
Well, the total on your sheet here, engineering legal fiscal.
That if we would have been at seven hundred and something thousand, we would have.
That's what we just discussed.
Seven hundred and seven.
That would have been, so we're probably closer to fourteen percent. Yeah, now, and that usually that's about. Eight, eight, eight or nine percent in the um, design planning end of it, and then another five or six percent in the construction phase. And the reason we always put the construction phase in there is not to exceed, is because sometimes you get really good contractors, you don't have to pay as much attention. And sometimes you get really bad contractors, if you're not watching everybody.
But this is something that B and K doesn't specialize in, right?
Absolutely.
With wastewater, um.
We 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 probably do, we've probably got seventy communities in the state of Iowa that we've done with seven.
Okay.
And I don't think anybody does more wastewater water than we do.
Any further questions for Mr. Mr. Foley? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this resolution. Uh, it's a roll call vote. Councilmember Schultz.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martinez.
Yes.
Councilwoman McFerrin.
Yes.
Resolution passes five to zero. A resolution to approve change order number two from SG Construction Company for well number two, phase two, pump house improvement project.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to approve?
Seven, Leo's phone.
This is a Leo.
We have a motion?
I have a.
Motion.
I have a Smith and a Martinez.
Motion in a second, all right, Leo.
Okay, so there's two items on here. One of them is the interior coil door.
Was that, was that a scolding, is that what that? Is that what that was?
I I I I.
Diane's not hearing.
I've been down the path. Okay, so let me, let me tell you about the door, so the door. Came up because the state of Iowa said we had to make a separate one, and we did. We put a wall in here, we put a door, there, a double door to the outside. When they looked at it. Um, the previous um, elected superintendent as well as the well superintendent said, you know, it might have been better if we had a door here, and then. Out of nowhere, they came up with a coil door, and everybody seemed to like the idea, including me. Because I thought it would be a easy way for the contractor to build the, build the new well. And the well relator, who has been your well person for forty years. Said, if you don't, you know, I, you can put it in with a crane, but every time we come, we have to bring a crane, it's more expensive. If you have this door, in the future, it will be a lot cheaper. So it's one of those ones where I, it wasn't a have to. But it probably was a good idea, I wish I would have thought of it earlier to do it that way. Um, I really, the reason I did, I've seen him bring it in through the roof before. But your roof hatch isn't over on the side, so they have to bring a bigger crane in, you've got a bill, so they they were. I guess um, Northway was saying that there is more expensive here to do that than would be in another place. So whenever you have to pull out the pump, whenever you have to do all those kind of things, they can do some of it now if they put this coil. That's a reason for the coil. The next door was that so far, I'm responsible for the poor.
You made it quite clear in your letter, three times.
That I would.
You read that, it was a little redundant, but.
Sorry. The next one is the replaced existing exterior door, and that's to the power hub, not to the well part of it. We put a new export area door onto the outside, a double door that opens. And again, we really didn't look at the other door, was in really bad shape. And and it's because I was focused on well, not the other door, when they brought up the other door. I went and looked at it and like, it's probably a good idea, it might well put the same door in there and they could probably. Do it at a reasonable cost.
So is, are they moving the existing one?
No, they basically take it out and put a brand new door in with a frame around it.
City council actually toured that facility recently, so now. See the door, everyone can visualize where the well is and that's.
So we just went right back to SG and said, give us a change order to put that, remove the door, get rid of it, and put the new door in.
Yeah.
And that's what they they gave us.
Great, any other questions? First foldings? We have a motion and a second to approve this resolution, and it is, again, a roll call vote, councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin.
Yes.
The resolution passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, we'll do a resolution accepting the bid from All American Concrete. The amount of two hundred forty three thousand nine hundred fifty four for the Nottington Bowl Division Street Improvement Project, is there a motion to approve? Motion.
Second.
Move the second to approve this. Resolution. Um, Mr. Foley, again, you, we have the paperwork here in front of us with the bid, looks like a lot of bids.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess I'm I'm gonna take credit for something on this one, which um. Um, I really did not think you'd ever get this many bids, pushing it at the end of the year, so I've taken credit for a good bid, but I had no confidence. Coming here, I thought you might get one or two bidders at the very best, so.
Wow.
I I get, every time I get confused, I'm glad I'm not a contractor. But I thought they would be too busy at the end of the year, and it would be hard to get a good contractor, so not only did we get a good contractor. That's just doing another road project, he can get started fast, and he wants to, so that's um. He did tell me tonight that if it gets approved, he'd like to get his some middles in tomorrow, and I'm like, go, get it, get it started, so.
Seven bids, the low bidder is below your estimate, and all of the other six are above the estimate, one. The high high bidder, three hundred and fifty eight thousand is significantly high, several of the top ones are high.
You think they all talk to each other and they're like, West Liberty, you can just add stuff, and they'll prove it.
I'll tell you.
Have competitive bid.
Bill Simon knows. Um, because it's him, he has competitors trying to drive.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
They they want to drive his price down, but he's not, he didn't get in business for no reason, he knows what they're doing.
And I'd rather.
He's told me before that the bids here are lower than what they'd be in other places.
Sure.
I guarantee they're lower than what I get in class cities by quite a bit, but we have, we factor in another percentage, ten percent more on that side of the state. And that has to do with the influences from Illinois.
Well, it sure is nice to work locally and 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 I'm sure that it is. Uh, easier for them in some ways.
They're a quality contractor.
Yeah.
And I would like to let everybody know that we help the bids outside, and everybody was very happy, I hope, to Leo, because there was another meeting in here, so from now on, bid meetings are only outside.
Because the standard thing.
And everybody's smiling, and I'm taking that for nothing.
Yeah.
Yeah, next one's a federal, yeah.
That'll go quick.
Hey, it's exciting to see this project move forward, we have a motion and a second to approve this resolution and this bid, any further discussion? Again, a roll call vote, councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin.
Yes.
Resolution passes five to zero. Thank you again, everybody, we have a resolution to approve the sale of police vets to the city of Durant Police Department, I'm sorry to say we lost a police officer who. Um, took a job between Durant's, our sergeant, if you're in, and he has a vesting spitting specifically to him, so. Rand will purchase that, must, Chief, is there anything you'd like to add on this?
Can I get a motion in this?
Oh, I'm sorry. Move and second in for the resolution, thank you, Jerry.
Uh, this is apparently a normal request, uh, in our, in our world, um, getting medical vests, ordering the vests, it takes several weeks. So considering that this is measured specifically for Jack, there's no guarantee that the next person to get in is going to fit into it, so I would rather. Do a favor of a smaller apartment that's still got four of years of life left in it, yeah, I just allow them to purchase it.
So the going rate for a vest is over six hundred dollars?
Uh, this specific one was a little bit more, um, it was one that came with both an interior and exterior carrier, so interior is underneath your uniform shirt. And the exterior is the one, and Jack had in Molly's system, so we could put things to his back, which is something that officers are encouraged to do, because it gets the weight off their hips and off their back, and that sort of thing, so. It was a little more expensive because it was with that special carrier.
Oh, okay.
Thanks for handling that, Chief, and all that you do. Uh, any further questions? We have a motion and a second to approve this resolution, and then again, a roll call vote, councilmember Schultz.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin.
Yes.
The motion passes five to zero, thank you, thank you. The resolution is setting positions and salary wages for the West Liberty Police Department, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Move and second to approve this resolution, I'll turn again to you, Chief, if you wanna fill us in on what we're looking at.
Uh, we held interviews for a presentation um, from reservation from Officer Friedrich, and uh. We extended an offer to an officer, um, who is certified, um, we'll have to put him, do some extra field training with him because he is newer. But he did accept that offer, uh, his start date, he just actually reached out to me yesterday, um, he wanted to do, go to California to visit family, get him back in several years. So we said, do that, come back, and we'll get you started, well, the start date we had picked was September twenty fifth, and that's when his flight back is. So he asked if he could start uh, Wednesday that week, um, so this is for his salary for an annual server.
I participated in the interview with Mr. Calderon and uh, yeah, happy to see him come to West Liberty. I think we were excited to.
Yep.
Having him come on board.
He's got a military background, he was in intelligence, um, most recently with the sheriff's department, he lives in Columbus Junction, he's bilingual. Um, super neat guy, very talkative, very personable, um, I'm looking forward to very much.
Chief, you've done a good job recruiting people and building the department backups to where we need it to be, and we have some ups and downs, but. Appreciate you doing that, and we're getting there, yeah, so thank you for that, I'm excited to get us. Back in a good, good position for the long term.
Um, Mr. Barry, just wanna add with the resolution, um, upon the salary, and I'm gonna let Chief speak to the, so instead of. Buying out because there's a contract for his training, so I just wanna let you.
Yep, I I appreciate that, I forgot to mention that, so this officer, because he's brand new, still uh, has a contract with Johnson County. It's very common when an officer switches, and he owes on that contract, or she owes on that contract, that the department that hires him would purchase that contract. Something that the city manager suggested, and I like that idea, was allowing this officer to keep his contract with county. And then we would yearly make a payment to that contract, to him to make the payment, so that way. If for some reason he leaves within the next five years, then we would only be out the time, the, that year, because he'd have to repay that year. But that way we're biting it off in small chunks, so he's gonna retain the contract, what we will do is help him pay for that. In exchange for staying police officer here, making sure that he's doing a good job, making sure that he's in good standing. Okay, did I get that right?
You did, yeah. No, no, no.
And thank you for my.
And we'll, we'll work on the agreement and bring it back, we're gonna get the attorneys.
For the, for the contract.
Yeah, you guys will see that in the future on the agenda.
Okay, great. Good, we have a motion and a second to approve this resolution, any further discussion? Again, a roll call vote, councilmember Schultz.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero, thank you, thank you. Setting the date for strategic planning with Mr. Callahan on December the seventh at five P M, is there a motion to approve?
Motion, second.
Move the second to approve setting this date. Let me look at my calendar here, guys. We're gonna do it outside, right?
Let's go be real quick.
To be real quick. Maybe we should have all meetings for that. Hey, that's.
Very good that policy.
I heard that. We're getting there, we're getting there.
I'll back yourself, you guys can all take me back individually.
Works for me, are we looking at the five P M on the seventh?
And this is a two hour or approximately?
Approximately two hours. You want?
No, we probably will go to the community center, um, would be my recommendation, because it's all superintendents. Yes. And it's um, all council, and then it would be, if there's new council members who are within, we would have. Um, existing, but you're definitely welcome to sit in on that. And.
Which is offering to.
Well, parking would be better. It will be at the community center, we, bigger events like that, we will make sure that we're in a bigger facility.
Does that daywork for everybody, sorry?
We can play my on here if you would prefer.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve that date. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed no, motion carries five to zero, looking for another date. Um, to do an evaluation for Lee Gertz. We are trying to get back on schedule of doing evaluations, and so the recommendation was to do, to evaluate. The previous role for Lee um, as city clerk. You've been working on that, do you have a proposed date for this in mind, or?
Uh, I was, well, it's coming on, but I was thinking that sooner the better, um. But uh, I'm gonna be a little like tied up the first week of October, and I know we've got that fire meeting, so I I'm. Open for suggestions. I can certainly, we could do it. Through October seventeenth before the. Yeah, it's a closed session, so we can do it before or after, I don't, yes, I'll request it for the session.
So could we do it at six P M on October seventeenth? That would be like work session time.
But probably doing the work session, you'd have to do it as a part of a meeting.
It would have to be on the council agenda.
But you can do that still, like, as a.
Well, we have to do the format.
Yeah, it would be on your actual agenda. Yeah, it would be on your actual agenda. I can't, it's like you can't have a work session for it. It has to be part of your agenda to have the post session.
A special council meeting for the date of the seventeenth? Before the real meeting? Two council meetings on one day.
It's not typical. We did do that when we did the appointment, so. I can look at putting that together if you would like to do something like that. We can just start the council meeting earlier than seven thirty and have it a part of the council meeting.
I mean, that would.
Yeah.
On that day.
That's a little, that's what I was thinking too, but that's a little bit awkward for the public benefit if they want to join, right? Because I don't know what the exact start time is.
Just put it on the the first thing as a closed session and then.
Yeah.
Start up with a close session at six and then.
Agenda and then you would, then if we have time in between, you can recess till seven thirty.
Well, that was my question. Can we just recess until seven thirty in the middle or is that weird?
That's gonna be extra work, I think. Um I I would just do it, it's. I if we're gonna have it, it has to be part of our meeting, then we need to still do real call agenda.
Correct.
You know, we have to go through one, two, three.
Should we do it at the end of the meeting?
I think that's the best. Plan.
Can we move the council meeting to start at six that night? Regular council meeting to start at six? I know that's set by, I don't know how that works.
Don't we make the ordinances?
Not to be like that guy, but we have to change the ordinance in three readings.
Yeah, it's a bigger deal than.
Can we go?
Meetings are different.
Well, that's the next question then. Can we do a special council meeting at six and have it a separate meeting?
That's exactly what I. That's what I was saying to actually, we did do that.
With the gesture of.
We did that with Lee and I I recommended interim and she was appointed sitting the winner, so yes, it is possible. I just need very direct. Like communication as to what you want.
Let's do that. Special city council meeting at six P M. From six, at six P M on the seventeenth. For this evaluation, followed by regular city council meeting at seven thirty.
I was really hoping you'd put it toward the end, so you you would make it.
Your idea was your best one. I don't know. Did we have a, let's see. We have a motion to set the date for this evaluation for. October seventeenth at six P M with a special city council meeting. We have a second. Uh any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Motion carries five to zero. We are going to set the date for another special city council meeting on October fifth at seven P M. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Move the second to approve this one. This is because of the timing for the annexation. We need to squeeze this one in. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Uh setting the date for a public hearing, same date. This is annexation again for uh Weely Chevrolet. Same date and time. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries five to zero. Finally, a a date for a public hearing for budget amendment at the same date and the same time. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Move the second into approval. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no.
He's four now.
The motion carries five to zero. Um just before we adjourn, I would remind everybody that uh the elections are upon us. And the deadline to turn in your paperwork is twenty first.
Thursday.
At, is there a particular time?
Probably four thirty when they close. It's not done through here, it's done through county.
The mayor's seat is up for election as well as councilmember Smith. Councilmember Schultz and councilmember McFerrin are up for election. So get your paperwork in and uh. Looking forward to that. I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn second.